Attention, please. The June 15, 2021 Annual Town Meeting for the fine town of Whately is now in session. Will all residents and independents please be in order? Thank you, I'm Nat Fortune, I'm your town moderator. And before we proceed to the articles, we have two small matters of business. First, we have a dedication of the town report, and then I have a few introductory remarks to orient you towards the warrant and articles you have before you. And for our dedication of the town report, I'd like to call on Fred Orlosky, please. Please welcome Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As chairperson of the Select Board, it's an honor every three years to dedicate a town report to an individual that has devoted their time and effort, passion, to help the town of Whately continue as we have. And this year's annual report, I'd like to dedicate it to James Ross. I think James is sitting over here. If you get a copy of the report, it's got a picture of our library on the front, and it's got a write-up of James Ross in here, what he's done, what he's contributed to the town. I won't read it all, I encourage you to get the report and read it yourself. The one part I'll just read, that he's been involved in several committees benefiting greatly from his construction experience. Some of the committees he's been involved in is library trustee, Franklin County Cooperative Inspection Program for almost 20 years, chairman of the Conservation Commission for 20 years, a voter registrar, and involved in veterans memorial activities. And more specifics on some of his activities are in the report, so I encourage you to pick up a copy and read the report. And it's fitting that this year's annual meeting, not only some of the warrant articles, but at least the cover on the report, is about our library, which Jim has dedicated a lot of his time and effort to. So in a way, it's a tribute to see the write-up, plus the picture of the building he's devoted so much time to. And there's also two articles on a warrant this evening that Jim has been directly involved with, the Veterans Memorial and also the library. So you can see that later on during the meeting. The other thing I'd like to... Okay, so Jim, would you like to come up and present the report to you? The other quick thing I'd like to mention is during this past year, it's been troubling to me to get things done with the town, to have meetings in person, but we've survived during the COVID era. And I guess at this time, I'd like to recognize some of the town staff that has dedicated their time during this past year, not only in the office, but also outside the office to make sure the town worked and functioned properly. I think some of them are here, I can't see them over there. Lynn Sibley is one of them. Amy Schrader was over there at the table. And also Janet Scully, I don't see Janet here today. But that was the three staff that have continued to make sure the town functions properly. But there's one person that kind of overseeing all of that activity was in offices or at home, working from home every day. We were not without that person. And for that, I'd like to recognize the leadership, the strength, the foresight, the ability of this person to help this town manage during these difficult times. That person is our town administrator, Brian Domina. Okay, and finally, I appreciate all of you showing up here, being at this annual meeting. I think we were here last year and survived the one year, and hopefully, next year, we'll be back to normal operations for town functions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. I wonder if we could also have a round of applause for Fred Orlosky for his many years So, welcome, everybody. We're here under extraordinary circumstances to do the most extraordinary of tasks. Simply by having registered to vote and showing up today and picking up this card, if you haven't, proceed and pick up right away, you become the legislature for this town. You didn't have to run for office, you didn't have to file papers, you didn't have to campaign, you didn't have to knock on doors, you didn't have to fundraise, you didn't have to be on the ballot. This is as direct democracy as we have in this country, and it's something worth keeping. You, by being here today, constitute the legislature, and you also state that you value this system of government, this direct democracy within our town. And so I thank all of you for being here and showing up. Now, because we are the legislature for this town, we only meet on occasion, and we need to empower officers of the town to work on our behalf. And that's why the first five articles here seem somewhat odd, that we're going to authorize the use of a bank account and for spending money and things like this. But that's because nothing can happen regarding the budget or the legislation of this town without the legislature authorizing it. And so the first five of these articles that empower the Select Board and Treasurer are actually a recognition of this form of government and the town meeting government that we've practiced here since Whately was founded. The next items, then, six through 30, deal with the financial matters that we, as a legislature, need to authorize. Six through nine are setting budget and expenses. The remainder are various financial matters, including authorization of transfer of funds from one account to another and between budget accounts. Because we have set these up as financial safeguards, and our authorization is required for the town to make use of them, other than originally allocated. The other thing a legislature does is it passes laws and declarations. And so for a town, they're called bylaws, and that's why Articles 31 through 38 are about bylaws and designations, including scenic designations coming up here. These have been prepared on our behalf by the many volunteer boards that we have working for us, and now is our chance to hear the justification and rationale and the implications of these things, and to vote to approve or to disapprove. In some cases, a majority vote is required, in other cases, two-thirds. When it's two-thirds, I'll call that to your attention, and also announce whether the two-thirds vote has been passed. So, without going further on this, we'd like to switch to taking up the first article, which begins with Jonathan of the Select Board.
Nat, do we need to have Lynn read the top part?
Lynn, would you like to read the top part, or would you rather I do that?
Franklin S. asks, "Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Whately by posting attested copies of the same at the town office, building, post office, and S. White Dickinson Library in said town, seven days at least before the date of the meeting as within directed. Edwin M. Zinyeski, constable of Whately, and it was posted on June 1, 2021."
Thank you, Lynn. You have now been duly warned.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the annual reports of the officers of the town and to hear any other reports of the boards and committees.
Second.
A majority vote is required. All in favor, raise your ballot. All opposed, abstentions, the motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 4, Section 17. Second.
The article moves to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, the article two carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into contracts for goods and services with a duration in excess of three years pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B.
Second.
The article is put forward as a motion. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, Article III carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to enter into compensating balance agreements with banking institutions, having their principal offices in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021, as permitted by General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F.
Second.
Article IV has been moved. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, Article IV carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to apply for, accept, and expend any federal, state, or private grant monies on behalf of the town, and authorize the town treasurer with approval of the Select Board to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement.
Second.
Article V has been moved. Proceed to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, Article V carries. Those are the first five articles, the ones that authorize Select Board and Treasurer to work on our behalf. The next of these have to do with the finance, and we will have an opportunity for discussion after each article has been moved prior to seeking a vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to establish spending limits for the town's revolving funds, as established by the town's general bylaws, Chapter 46, Revolving Funds, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021, as follows. The Dogon Licensing and Control Revolving Fund, spending limit $2,000. The Recreation Revolving Fund, spending limit $20,000. The Library Revolving Fund, spending limit $1,000. The Public Hearing Revolving Fund, spending limit $10,000. Cordwood Sales Revolving Fund, spending limit $2,500. Cemetery Commissioners Revolving Fund, spending limit $4,000. Trench Permit, spending limit $1,000. Recycling and Solid Waste Revolving Fund, spending limit $15,000.
Second.
Article VI has been moved. Are there any questions, any discussion on this article? If you have a question, raise your card. Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, abstentions, Article VI passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries or compensation of the elected officers of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021, as follows. And if you follow along in your booklets, you will see the salaries listed. Unless someone wants to ask me to read them, I will give you the right to say no.
All right, the article has been moved. Is there any discussion? All right, 2% cola, 98% water. All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article VII passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $406,909 or any other sum or sums of money from the Water Department Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021, as follows. I also will not read it, because I know you have it in front of you.
Second.
All right, Article VIII has been moved and seconded, and is now up for discussion. Is there anyone who has a question or a comment regarding the Water Department, Article VIII? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Article VIII, please raise your card. Opposed? Abstentions? Article VIII passes unanimously. Okay, Article IX, we now move to Tommy Maher of the Finance Committee.
Article IX, "To act on the report of the Finance Committee on the fiscal year 2022 operating budget and to raise an appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, money for the operation of the town's departments, boards, committees, agencies, and officers for the payment and debt service and for all other necessary and proper expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021." Note, the Water Department Enterprise Fund was appropriated in Article VIII. The Finance Committee recommends that the amount shown in the column captioned "Fiscal Year 2022 Operating Budget" be raised or appropriated or transferred from available funds for fiscal year 2022 operating purposes, debt service, and other town expenses.
And now I'd like to call Paul Antea from the Finance Committee to walk us through the items on this article.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nat. Again, I'm Paul Antea, Chairperson of the Finance Committee. I'd like to take this a little bit of time to go through each of the departments. We feel this is a good budget. All town services are intact. It's a minimal impact on our tax rate. And the transparency issue continues. We feel strongly that transparency, town government, especially in the dollars collected and spent, there's nothing more important than transparency. It's like motherhood and apple pie. You gotta have it. There are two departments in this budget that we are not 100% on. Yes, we recommended them, and I'll talk about them as I get there, but I just want to make you aware. Okay, the first department, general government. General government has $508,626,000 total, that's what you'll be voting on when you vote on the entire amount. It's a $91,658 increase, 21.98%, almost a 22% increase on general government. And as you can see, the majority of that is for a new position in town. We need that new position, because there are a lot of boards, a lot of committees that need extra help. Why? Because for the most part, we don't have enough people volunteering. If we had more people volunteer, that would take the burden off existing individuals. But we don't want things to slip through the cracks, we don't want opportunities for monies from the state to lose that. So this position is very important. Any questions on general government? Any comments? The next would be Cultural Recreation Services. They have $135,834 budget for $3,627 for 2.74% increase, relatively small. I'll tell you the concern here, as I spoke about a short time ago. The concern is the Trittown Beach and the transparency that exists with those monies. We've been trying for years to find how the dollars are collected, how the dollars are spent, and that has not been successful. Luckily now, we have a new board, we have one of our select people on that board, and we think moving forward, it will come up to speed. So in regards to the Cultural Recreation Services, any questions? Any comments?
There's a question in the far right.
I just, no, on aging has dropped.
I wonder, Nat, if you could please stand up and identify yourself there and speak a little more loudly, please.
I'm sorry, Ellen Skroski. Can you tell us why the Council on Aging has decreased significantly?
The Council on Aging, from my understanding, going back to the meetings, this is what, these are the monies that they requested. So, do we have that individual here today who heads the local Council on Aging? I don't see that person. Brian? Brian, is there any more you could add to that?
So this was the budget that they had submitted. For years, the Council on Aging was a $500 appropriation, and then the Council on Aging had influx of new members, and they had hoped to accomplish things like community outreach. They had some expenses for the Whately, to participate in the Whately 250th, and they were trying to really revitalize the Council on Aging. And then the past 12 months happened with COVID. So what I'm looking at in the budget, there's just some decreases in terms of postage, reusable banner, advertising, and birthday cards. So it's still $550 more than they typically use, but that's the budget that was submitted.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, Paul.
Yes, please.
The Council on Aging is perhaps one of the poster children for the lack of volunteerism. And it's also a very hard committee to volunteer for. If we got some active volunteerism within the Council on Aging with some fresh ideas and some concepts around how to make Whately a vibrant place to live for our senior citizens, and by the way, those who are approaching senior citizen age, you could see the budget go up. So it's a function of more volunteers, more money, fewer volunteers, less money, because they're just doing less, and our senior population does what it can, but it gets harder. So I would do a shout-out for anyone who wants to help revitalize the Council on Aging to do so. The people who ran the Council on Aging for years, you know, like all of us, they got a little old, and they couldn't do it anymore. And that happens to all of us. So if anyone would like to volunteer their time and revitalize the Council on Aging, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you, Jonathan. One last point on the Cultural Recreation Services that I wanted to draw your attention to, that the Finance Committee is very skeptical about, and that's simply the South County Senior Center. And the reason we're skeptical about that, we can follow the dollars, we know what they do, they cannot prove that any Whately resident uses their services. We've been asking them for this for about four years now. And today's technology, all we're asking them is to keep a list, and they haven't done that. Now, last year, obviously COVID, this year's still affected by the whole COVID issue, and we haven't taken a draconian stance on this, but you can rest assured that if it continues, we have no choice but to not recommend this to the town. They are taking this out of our hands by not submitting and not showing that the value to Whately is in the $24,200 that they're asking for from our town. So that's just an FYI. Before I get off this, are there any questions, once again?
Thanks. Hi, Beth Lukin from Michikowski Circle. I have a question. The Trittown Beach is still closed, right?
Correct.
So why are we throwing money at it?
We are throwing money at it because there is going to be a resurgence, and this is kind of like seed money. And if they need to do some painting or need to get people in to assess the quality of the water or the weeds that are growing there, there will be money there to do that, because we're very hopeful that in years to come, next year and the year after, we'll have a real facility there that we can be proud of and use and swim.
Mr. Edwards.
I joined the Trittown Beach Commission earlier this year to give it a complete makeover. I will make no bones about the fact that I think it's a dump. I think it's an embarrassment, and I think it doesn't take advantage of the asset that it should be for the town of Whately and its residents. And so that's why I made the leap of faith that I could give it a complete makeover along with other new people on the commission. I have no intention of just making it what it was. We are finding things out that we didn't know before. It is a national heritage site. I don't know how that happens, when it was a dry land before the highway went in, but it nonetheless is a national heritage site. So we have to figure out how to work around those limitations. But my goal with Trittown Beach is to not just clean the water, make it a swimmable place, improve the sand, tear down the current bathhouse and put a new bathhouse up, perhaps put in a larger, more vibrant concession stand, if not a full-fledged restaurant, with a liquor license. In the back property behind the Trittown Beach is land that Whately owns. I'd like to perhaps put in tennis courts, basketball courts, and make it almost a club atmosphere for the residents of Whately to really enjoy. Now, can I do it all? Can I accomplish this? I don't know, but any business plan has to have a vision, and that's what my vision is for the Trittown Beach, and to really make it a destination.
Jonathan, the moderator has a question for you. Of all those things you've articulated, how many of them are in this year's budget?
The assessment for what is possible is in this year's budget, with the possibility of the sand replacement and other very minor elements that would allow it to reopen of a clean version of what it currently was.
So is it fair to say that this line item in the budget is for the rehab and renewal, upgrade of it to bring it back to opening conditions?
And an assessment of what's possible.
And an assessment of how to proceed.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, ma'am, fully? Thank you very much for asking it. I return to Paul Antea.
Okay, let's move on to public health. Public health has an operating budget of $93,900. They're asking for a $6,196 increase, 7.06. The bulk of that is salary for health agent, and we have to comply. This is a very important part of the services of this town. Any questions on public health? Okay, next. Public safety. You'll be voting on $405,761. That's an increase of $16,651 for 4.28%. Questions? Comments? Okay. Public works. You'll be voting on $408,000. You'd be voting on $408,700. Increase of $10,218 for 2.56% increase. I gotta tell you, that's a deal. Any comments? Any questions? Fine. Insurance and benefits, very little that we can do in regards to impacting these numbers. But the, the numbers are what they are. We need to raise $802,266, a $42,000 increase, 5.53%. Questions on insurance and benefits? Okay. Unclassified, yeah?
Give me a little more time.
Want me to give you more time? Okay. Any questions? No?
I think they're good.
Thank you. Did I say unclassified? No. Okay, unclassified. Operating budget is asking for $71,453, $472 increase, 0.66% increase. Any questions on the unclassified portion? Okay. Let's go into the schools. I'll take the schools individually. Waitley Elementary School. Waitley Elementary School is asking for $1,829,786. That's a $44,602 increase for 2.5%. Any questions on Waitley Elementary School? Okay. Frontier Regional. Frontier Regional is asking for $916,815 from Waitley. It's a decrease of $64,009 for, again, a decrease at 6.53%. Thank you, Frontier. Okay. Franklin County Tech. Yep.
Are there any questions regarding the Frontier budget?
Good pickup. Thanks. Okay, Franklin County Tech asking for $198,869 for a reduction of $30,673, which is a negative 13.36%. Again, thank you Franklin County Tech. And those are the schools. Any general school question, comment, anyone would like to make?
Hi, Ginny Mason. Is there no kids going to any of the charter schools?
They don't have a budget here.
How do you pay them?
What?
I wonder if there's a representative from the school committee who could explain how charter funds are deducted from the school committee budget?
Yeah. They're in there. They're in.
Not seeing anyone here at the time. I would encourage you to have a discussion with the principal or the superintendent or the chair of the school committee. But it's a direct deduction from the school budget rather than in the finance budget here.
Thank you. Long, um, are we off schools? The charter thing? Are we good? Okay. Last, not least, long-term debt, $48,660. And, um, that's what they're asking for. So specifically, it's for excavator and, and the lease of those two items for the Highway Department. And you can see them there. Any questions about those two items specifically in long-term debt? Okay. So the entire, what you'll be voting on again, five million, over $5 million budget. The increase, $169,000 at 3.23. Now, that is what we're seeing now. The guesstimate in terms of taxation is, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of, Brian? It's a 15% increase, I mean 15 cent increase over last year. And that will, um, that we reflect in, what's that number again?
1507.
1506, okay. And if you think about that a little bit, um, that's less, that's, that's a lower tax rate than what we had in 2019, 18 and 2017. And I look back in two, in 2003, we had a tax rate of over $18 per thousand. So generally speaking, the, the services are better. And the taxation is adequate, to say the least. And, um, that's what we have. I'm going to turn this over to the moderator.
All right, thank you, Paul Antea. I know we all mourn the loss of Paul's wonderful PowerPoint presentations that we normally have at this time. And I can only hope that being outside in the, in the, in the cool evening breeze at least partially compensates for that loss. All right, and as always, I would like to thank the Finance Committee for their extremely hard work each year preparing this budget. You will notice they are the only committee for which there was a dollar amount not allocated because they work for free. So perhaps some applause for the Finance Committee? And an opportunity for our newest member to introduce herself, please.
Hi, my name's Patty Devine. I live on 5 and 10.
All right, we now, thank you, Patty. We're now going to move to, this has been moved and seconded. We've had discussion and we moved to a vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your card.
Article nine.
Article nine.
I'm not sure it was.
All right. That we have to move it in order to have discussion?
I didn't hear.
All right. Would we like to have a second motion?
Second.
Tommy? Okay. Thank you. Now that we're doubly sure that we're ready to spend money, here's your chance to vote to spend money. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Article nine passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to transfer the sum of $200,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to reduce the tax levy for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021.
Second.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Really, not even what is free cash? All right, then we'll move to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Article 10 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to the Vehicle Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Article 11 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 70, Section 5B, to create a separate stabilization fund to be known as the Town Building Stabilization Fund, the purpose of which is to reserve such sums of money as annual or special town meeting shall vote to appropriate or transfer into it for expenses related to the construction and repair of existing or future town-owned buildings and not for ordinary maintenance. And further vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash into the Town Building Stabilization Fund to be authorized by vote under this article.
Second.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded. It requires a two-thirds vote because it is creating a stabilization fund as do votes that allocate money into or out of stabilization funds. This serves as a firewall for us in terms of our budget and for long-term, and it aids us in long-term planning. Is there any discussion regarding Article 12? If not, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Article 12 passes unanimously and therefore satisfies the two-thirds vote requirement.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $21,500 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to pay for the purchase of new communications equipment for the police and fire departments.
Second.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Communications. All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Article 13 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to pay for the purchase and installation of a backup emergency generator for the town offices located at 4 Sandy Lane.
Second.
Article 14 is now up for discussion? It's just too nice a day, right? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Article 14 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $12,000 from available funds for school year 20 free cash to pay for the purchase of a new snowplow to be used by the Highway Department.
Second.
Article 15 is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about snow this lovely day in June? All right, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Article 15 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $21,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to pay for the purchase and installation of a new commercial oven for the cafeteria of the Waitley Elementary School.
Second.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded. Finally, a truly hot topic. Any discussion? All right, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor, Article 16? Opposed? Article 16 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $45,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to pay for the milling and resurfacing of the driveway and parking lot at the Waitley Elementary School.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. You've all had a chance to inspect it on the way in. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Article 17 passes unanimously. Was it 18?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $29,000 from available funds, General Stabilization Fund, to pay for the milling and resurfacing of the driveway and parking lot at the Waitley Elementary School.
Second.
Okay, Article 18 has been moved and seconded. You'll notice that these, this and the previous article are both about the same item. But because they come from different funds, we had to vote for them separately. And this one, because it comes with stabilization fund, requires a two-thirds vote. Seeing no request or discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? And all those abstentions? Article 19.
18.
18 passes with one vote in opposition.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote.
Sorry, and therefore, two-thirds vote threshold has been satisfied. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to pay for the installation of new floor tiling and area rugs at Waitley Elementary School.
Second.
Article 19 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we will move to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Article 19 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to pay for repairs and painting to the interior and exterior of the police station.
Second.
Article 20 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Is there a preferred paint color? No? Okay, that's up to the discretion of the Police Department. All those in favor? Opposed? Article 20 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $5,000 from the Water Department Enterprise Fund retained earnings to pay for upgrades to the Westbrook Road Pumping Station.
Second.
Sorry, Article 21 is now up for discussion? Seeing no requests, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. Anyone opposed? Article 21 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $1,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to pay for crack ceiling and repairs to the town offices, driveway and parking lot.
Second.
Article 22 is now up for discussion? Seeing no requests, we move to a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. Opposed? Article 22 passes with one vote in opposition.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $15,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to be expended for the expenses incurred to comply with the town's obligations under Chapter 253 of the Acts of 2020, an act relative to justice, equity and accountability in law enforcement in the Commonwealth.
Second.
Article 23 has been moved and seconded and proceeds discussion. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, please. Could you wait for the microphone to reach you, please? And kindly identify yourself as well.
Branchikis, 25, Gray Oak Lane. I'd just like a brief summary of what these requirements are to comply, what the town's obligations would be. Thank you.
Is there someone who can address that question? Jim?
Good evening. Jim Savini, Chief of Police for the Waitley Police Department. So the compliance issues for the Waitley Police Department are training. So the biggest thing that we're facing right now with the police reform is that it's going to require all of our part-time officers to attend 200 additional hours of training. Plus, we have to purchase some equipment related to our body cams for software editing and things like that. So when we calculate all those figures, we're looking at about $15,000. It's going to be spread out over three years. So we're most likely going to be looking for the same things next year and the year after until we get all of our officers trained up to the, the new standard.
Thank you, Jim, for the explanation. Any further follow-up questions or discussion? Thank you for the question. We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor on Article 23? Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Article 23 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from available funds fiscal year 20 free cash to be expended for the Waitley 250th anniversary celebration.
Second.
Article has been moved and seconded, Article 24. Any questions or discussion? All right, let's proceed to a vote for Article 24. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed? All right, Article 24 passes. We're looking forward to a wonderful Waitley 250th plus one celebration.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town hear and act pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44B, on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2022, Community Preservation Budget, and vote to. Preservation Budget, and vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund a sum of money in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and any other necessary and proper expenses in the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021, including debt service for any approved community preservation project, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. The appropriations is as follows: From fiscal year 2022, estimated reserves for committee administrative expenses, $9,000. From reserves from fiscal year 2022, estimated reserves for open space reserve, $20,500. From fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues for affordable housing reserve, $20,500. From fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues for budgeted reserve, $87,000. Debt service from fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues for town hall loan debt service, $43,000.
Second.
Is, Article 25 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We therefore will move to a vote. All those in favor? Raise your card. Opposed? Abstentions? Article 26. Article 25 is passed unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44B, to appropriate and transfer the sum of $75,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, unreserved fund balance for handicapped accessibility improvements and other improvements to the S. White Dickinson Library, including but not limited to the installation of a lift, construction of a handicapped accessible restroom, upgrades to the fire alarm system, and other accessibility improvements.
Second.
Article 26 is now up for discussion. Okay, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article 26 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44B, to appropriate and transfer the sum of $21,000 from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserves for improvements to the Veterans Memorial Park, including but not limited to installation of additional memorial stones and plaques, construction of a stone wall, and the installation of new granite benches and plantings.
Second.
All right, Article 27 has been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to ask us to proceed to a vote. Article 27. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article 27 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to return the sum of $274.23 of Community Preservation Act funds, being the amount of funds remaining from an appropriation of $15,000 under Article 13 of the December 1, 2016 Special Town Meeting, for the purchase of a secure storage vault for the town office building to the Community Preservation Fund Historic Resources Reserve.
Second.
Article 28 has been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. Article 28. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Article 28 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to return the sum of $918.06 of Community Preservation Act funds, being the amount of funds remaining from an appropriation of $49,000 under Article 13 of the December 1, 2016 Special Town Meeting, for the purchase of a secure storage vault for the town office building to the Community Preservation Fund unreserved fund, unreserved fund balance.
Second.
Article 29 has been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? It's kind of hard to object to something being under budget and getting money back, right? Okay, all in favor of accepting the money back. All those opposed? All right, Article 29 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to return the sum of $1,006 of Community Preservation Act funds, being the amount of funds remaining from an appropriation of $4,500 under Article 27 of the April 30, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, for the restoration of the circa 1938 advertising backdrop curtain owned by the Waitley Historical Society and its mounting on the town hall stage to the Community Preservation Fund unreserved fund balance.
Second.
Article 30 has been moved and seconded. Proceeding to a vote. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Article 30 passes unanimously. Give yourself a round of applause. You've completed the budget for this year. And before the end of the fiscal year, which is a practice I'm sure we hope our state will emulate.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to designate Poplar Hill Road as a scenic road pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 15(c), and further to amend the Waitley General Bylaws, Chapter 148-3, Waitley Scenic Road Bylaw, Paragraph B, to include Poplar Hill Road as a designated scenic road, and to authorize the town clerk to insert those words in Paragraph B in grammatically correct form.
I second that.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion, either about the designation or the grammar? Paul?
Thanks. Paul Newland, 148 Conway Road, but also bordering Poplar Hill Road and Williamsburg Road and Weber Road. So, I'd like to know what difference it makes if, when a road is made a scenic road.
So, somebody can answer that question for us, please? In the back, please.
Hi, can you hear me? Donna Wiley, Historical Commission. This is actually a continuation of something we started last year, so I'll repeat myself for those of you who were out here last year.
A little bit louder, please.
Okay. The State of Massachusetts allows individual towns to designate scenic roads, and the last time the town of Waitley did this was in 1973. So, we're actually two years ahead of our 50-year target. At that time, Waitley designated Chestnut Plain, Haydenville, and Conway Road. There's now a fourth road because North Street was part of Chestnut Plain at that time. We, the historical, I don't know where Keith is. Is Keith here? Up there. The Historical Commission worked with Keith last year, Keith Bardwell, to talk about what that meant for the work, particularly his work as tree warden, because the main condition that being designated a scenic road puts in place is that before the town removes any trees over a certain diameter, and I think we're now at six inches, or an historic stone wall, from the town's right-of-way, so this has no bearing on those of you who own private property that face on those streets, this is all about the town's right-of-way, there has to be a public hearing. And Keith actually organizes those, I think it's probably about one a year, for tree work generally on the existing historic, rather scenic roads. So, after we voted our own town scenic bylaw, which we did a year ago, we started looking at the rest of the town. We looked back at the relevant state bylaw, which is cited in the write-up, and discovered that scenic road really doesn't mean a road that is beautiful, a road that is good to look at. It's all about protecting forests and historic stone walls. And for that reason, we've added three, which we proposed to you. Actually, the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission have signed on to this, Poplar Hill, Weber, and Strip. There are a couple of other things that the Planning Board might want to say, I think.
Is there anyone from the Planning Board? Judy? Thank you, Donna, for that explanation. And could we have a microphone up front, please, for Judy Markland, the Planning Board?
Put your hand, Judy, because I don't think he can see you.
How about a round of applause for the FCAT volunteers here?
I'm Judy Markland, on commission and the Planning Board. And I'd like to, one other just that, that the scenic roads gives is when the Planning Board does a site plan review, which it does for large projects like solar facilities, or marijuana cultivation, or commercial kinds of properties, one thing that we are to look at is important resources in town and see that they're preserved. And one, one designation on there is a scenic road. So, it gives a little sort of extra oomph, I guess. Very technical word.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. Are there any further questions or discussion on this item? Yes, please.
Steve Huntley, 51 Weber Road. So, so having this distinction, does it lead to more highway funds? Does it do anything along those lines?
So, someone would like to speak to that. So far, we've heard that it protects, or at least gives a review to trees and stone walls, and that it's a criteria when determining zoning. Is there anyone who can speak to highway funds or anything in that regard? Here's the answer is no.
I can't speak to highway funds.
Okay.
But I can say that many of this, well, if I could get the frog out of my throat, I could. Many of the applications for state funding ask about the presence of scenic roads in the areas for which we're applying for money. And we don't know what's going to come down the road, but it's a, sorry, that was a bad joke. But, but we know that this is a state program, and the state respects its own designations, so we think it cannot hurt. That's it.
Yes, please.
Ever, do they have to follow these two? I'm concerned about old trees becoming brittle and us losing power.
This has to do with the town's right-of-way. Brian, can you speak to the issue of ever source on that regard?
Yeah, this would apply to any, any trees over six-inch in diameters.
All right. So, what it would mean is that ever source wanted to do work on that tree, it would have a public hearing first. Okay, if there's no further questions or discussion, we move to a vote on Article 31. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, it passes with four votes in opposition. Majority vote has been satisfied.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to designate Strip Road as a scenic road pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), and further to amend the Waitley General Bylaws, Section 148-3, Waitley Scenic Roads Bylaw, Paragraph B, to include Strip Road as a designated scenic road, and to authorize the town clerk to insert those words in Paragraph B in grammatically correct form.
Second.
Is there a discussion regarding Strip Road, Article 32? Seeing none, proceed to a vote on Article 32. All those in favor, raise your card. Anyone opposed? There are three votes in opposition. The majority vote has been satisfied. Article 32 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to designate Weber Road as a scenic road pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 15(c), and further to amend the Waitley General Bylaws, Section 148-3, Waitley Scenic Road Bylaw, Paragraph B, to include Weber Road as a designated scenic road, and to authorize the town clerk to insert those words in Paragraph B in grammatically correct form.
Second.
Any further discussion regarding Weber Road? If not, we move to a vote on Article 33. All those in favor, raise your hand. If you're opposed? All right, and I count perhaps six votes in opposition. Majority vote is required and satisfied. Article 33 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Waitley Zoning Bylaw and zoning map established under Section 171-4 to rezone the following parcels from the Agricultural Residential District 1 to the Commercial District. In order to allow for more commercial uses to be carried out on these parcels, parcel number one, assessor map ID number 06-0-04-3, Egypt Road adjacent to the railroad tracks. Parcel two, assessor's map ID number 12-0-24, 148 State Road. Parcel number three, assessor's map ID number 12-0-24-1, land between State Road and Interstate 91.
Second.
Article 34 has been moved and seconded. I need to point out two things. On some earlier printings, there was a typo in the map ID for parcel number two. The correct ID is 12-0-24, not 12-02-24. My second announcement is a two-thirds vote is required, and a third surprise announcement is if you can't read that 12-0-24, it may be that you dropped your glasses somewhere in the field behind you, and I will hand them over to the town administrator so you can surreptitiously recollect your, your reading glasses at your convenience. Thank you. And open it up for discussion. I see no hands for, oh, there is a hand for discussion. Thank you.
James Ross, State Road. Regarding the parcel on Egypt Road, I have an agreement with Walter and Richard Thayer here to purchase the piece of property for them to put up a little shop for my business, JDR Builders, started in this town 22 years ago. I've just exceeded the space at my house, and I want my company out of my backyard, and I intend to put up a commercial building to store my stuff. I have no materials get delivered. There's no outdoor storage, just a nice, neat, clean place to put my stuff. I've spoken with all of the area neighbors, and there's been no objections whatsoever in this. So, please support it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments or discussion? Seeing none, we therefore will vote, proceed to a vote. Article 34. All those in favor, raise your card. Anyone opposed? See, three, four votes in opposition. By the count of the moderator, the two-thirds vote has been, requirement has been satisfied. Article 34 passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Waitley Zoning Bylaws, Section 171-8 Table of Use Regulations by inserting a new commercial use designation of trucking and construction equipment in the commercial uses category as shown below. And you can read the designations in, in the various columns of agricultural residential all the way through commercial to industrial.
Second.
There's been, Article 35 has been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Yes, please.
I'd like a definition on what trucking and construction equipment is. And there's a lot of people in town that might have a piece of equipment, Bobcat tractor with a backhoe on it, little bucket loader they have. They've had forever non-commercial uses that would have them on their property. Would this make that be banned now?
So, someone who can speak to that, please? From the Planning Board or Select Board? Judy, would you like to speak, or Don?
Don, speak.
Gentleman there? Thank you.
I'm not crippled enough not to be able to hold it. Yeah, it basically means very large trucks and very large pieces of equipment.
Yeah, it basically means very large trucks and very large pieces of equipment, front loaders and things like that. We're not looking for any small equipment. Probably even Bobcats would be fine. But at some point, it gets big enough that it's pretty recognizable that it's a large piece of equipment. So it's somewhat probably available to a judgment, but that's as best as we could do it. We may, if necessary, give a more, add a definition into the bylaw at some point in the future.
All right, thank you. From Don, we have it's bigger than a bread box and bigger than a Bobcat. Is there any else who wants to follow up with a question or discussion, clarification? Your question, hands raised over there, please?
Teresa Belial, 190 Christian Lane. Does that?
Teresa, your voice cut out. Try holding it more like an ice cream cone.
Okay. Does that include tractor trailers? Stop and stop, all those stores? So we better be careful what we're asking for because they go to the agricultural farms to pick up stuff. So they would now be banned from Christian Lane?
Hold on, Don, please get for the microphone. Don?
Only, you just can't put them on your property unless you're in Commercial 1, Commercial, Industrial, or Industrial.
They can just drive by and go pick up. Is that correct?
Loading, unloading, pickup, no idling, no parking.
Make a comment, Fred Orlovsky. I think there should be a definition.
A little louder, Fred, please.
Fred Orlovsky, I think there should be a definition of trucking. To say a large truck, what's a large truck? You know, that's very subjective. And it's going to come down to, it's going to come down to the planning board or ZBA or the building inspector who issues the permit to decide, is this a large truck? Or is this kind of trucking activity allowed in these zones? As far as for trucking, there is nine different classes of trucks that are universally recognized by traffic engineering, traffic experts, highway departments. There's nine vehicle classes of trucks. If we're going to limit trucking, we should define which of the nine vehicle classes of trucks are we allowing in a commercial zone?
Additional questions, comments?
Fred, do you happen to know the particulars of that, of those classifications?
Yes, there, Furco, Franklin County Regional Council of Governments uses them classifications when they do a vehicle classification study that they recently done on, it was Christian Lane. They've done some on Chestnut Plain Road. I think they did one here outside of the school this year. The nine are part of a 13. There's actually 13 vehicle classes. Nine of them are trucks. So if you look on their site, or you can get their reports from our town office of what them classes specifically, how they're identified. But that is a nationally recognized identification for trucks.
All right, I see Judy has a hand. Is there anybody else who wants to participate in discussion? Okay.
Fred, in response to your, really needs to be up high. I think in general, most of the uses on the table of use are not specifically defined. And what we're talking about is a commercial use. So it's a trucking business, or a trucking equipment business. And I think in general, my perspective is it's better not to have too specific a definition because the control is with the ZBA to determine with a special permit whether this business is appropriate for that location. And there might be some location where one truck, trucking kind is appropriate and one not. So that would, that would be my response.
Well, there's one more question first, and then you can have the microphone.
Keith Bardwell from Westbrook Road. I was just going to suggest that perhaps that this be tabled until it gets further discussed. I definitely understand what everybody's talking about when it talks about the different classifications of trucks. And I think there's just, it needs to be a little clearer before we vote on it.
All right, we have one final comment in the queue, but then a motion to lay on the table is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote to do so. So Jonathan, please.
I guess I'm going to agree with Keith. What we want to avoid is objectivity in the decisions that are being made by the ZBA or by the building inspector or by other people. I think we want to avoid having the perceived, whether it's accurate or not, at least we want to avoid the perceived favoritism of one person making a request for a special permit as opposed to somebody else. And that discussion will inevitably arise without a little bit more specificity. So I guess I will encourage my, and that says nothing to take away from the work that the planning board's done. I just think that it requires a little bit more work and thought. And by the way, involvement by the people out here on town meeting floor as opposed to not attending the hearings that the planning board will host. If you have something to say about how this should look in its final format, you should attend the public hearing that the planning board creates. Otherwise, the planning board's running blind in terms of public sentiment until they get to a town meeting when it's oftentimes too late. So I would recommend that we kick this back to the planning board and the rest of the town.
Jonathan, are you therefore seconding the motion to lay on the table?
I am, I will, was that a motion?
Well, the only way you are allowed to speak is if you were seconding that motion. I forgot to tell you that.
Why is that?
It's just the rule. So I'm hoping that you will, hoping all you need to do is say, I therefore second the motion put forward by Keith Bardwell.
Okay, but it wasn't a motion that, but okay. I'll second the motion by Keith Bardwell.
When you, Keith, did you or did you not propose to lay on the table this article? All right, now a formal motion. Would you like to make a formal second?
Sure.
All right, all right. So therefore, to keep it legit, this is what happens. To put this on the table would mean to take no further action on this article today. And in order to do that, there would have to be a two-thirds vote in favor of putting it on the table. If that vote passes, then we take no further action. If it fails, we move to a vote on the article itself. And for it to pass, it would require a two-thirds vote. Now, at this point, I think that I'm going to need some counters here. And so I'm looking at the mathematically nimble and capable residents of the intersection of Weber Road, Poplar Road, Conway Road, and one other to be named later. Paul Nillan and Claudia, Claudia, if you would also be my counters, please. Thank you. All right. So we're now dealing with the motion to lay on the table, Article 35, which requires a two, if you are in favor of laying it on the table, that is taking no further action, raise your card.
Excuse me, is there any debate regarding the motion?
It is not debatable.
Because that, I was looking to clarify, what is the status of the law now with regard to that equipment?
It's, there's no further discussion, there's no further debate. I was remiss in letting Jonathan go on earlier. The other things, it's not amendable. However, it can be put up for a vote for reconsideration. Let's not try that. Okay. All those in favor of laying on the table and taking no further action, please raise your card. All right, keep your arms up. This is the exercise part of the, all right. If you feel like one muscle's going to get too strong, you could switch from hand to hand, but please keep the ballot up as you do so. And the number in favor is, please? 29 plus 43? I can. It's 72 in favor of laying on the table. All those opposed to the motion to lay on the table? 10. All right. 72 out of 82 is 87.8%. This exceeds two-thirds, and so no further action will be taken on this article today. We therefore move to Article 36.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw, Section 171-17, Site Plan Review and Review of Large Developments to modify the submission requirement for site plan documents as shown below. And I won't read it all out. The portions that are italic, underlined are proposed as an addition. Anything struck is proposed to be deleted.
Second.
Article 36 is now open for discussion. All right, we wore ourselves out on the last one there. Let's move to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? I count two votes in opposition, and I declare that it is passed. Article 36 is passed by the two-thirds vote requirement.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw, Section 171-28.6, Adult Use Recreational Medical Marijuana Establishments by inserting a definition for indoor marijuana cultivation in subsection B definitions to authorize the town's ability to inspect and monitor operating facilities. And by inserting a new paragraph 16, Inspections and Monitoring, in subsection D, Site Development Permitting Standards and Application, and renumbering the remaining paragraphs in subsection D as shown below, which is in your packets.
Second.
All right, Article 37 has been moved and seconded. It is up for discussion. If there's anyone with a question or comment, please raise your card. All right, there is one in the back.
Hi, Justin Davis, 18 Gray Oak Lane. I was just wondering, is this for private growing? Or is this commercial? Or is it both?
The question is regarding private versus commercial. Microphone, please, for Don. It's just commercial. Is that what you're saying? Okay. Does that answer your question fully?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. Are there more questions? Please go ahead.
Teresa Belial. And what I noticed is there's no mention of light. And having gone through, living on Christian Lane, with my house being lit up day and night, I want to make sure this isn't going to happen again.
Is anything in this article speaking to that particular concern? No.
And my house was lit up like the night sky from day until night, all night long. And nothing was ever done but, except the town does have a zoning bylaw about light, but it's not mentioned in this article.
Don, please.
Yeah, this is only to define a couple of things. When the planning board does a site plan review for marijuana things, one of the things we do not allow is light can be seen after 7:00 PM. And that's in the existing, that's already in the existing bylaw.
All right, so we've clarified what this bylaw for marijuana cultivation is about. It sounds like a resident may wish to visit the planning board to ask for amendment on more general rules or regarding cultivation of things in general. If someone would want to propose a change or an article for a future meeting, what would be the way you would recommend they proceed?
Simply call me and say you would like to get on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right, anybody want to be on the agenda for the planning board? Please contact Don Suter. Thank you there. All right. Seeing no further questions or comments, I'd like to move to a vote on Article 37 regarding marijuana cultivation to amend existing statutes. All those in favor, raise your hand, raise your card. All those opposed? Seems like the article is passed unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Whately zoning bylaw, Section 171-37, Terms Defined to Expand the Definition of Accessory Apartments so as to allow a 600-foot square foot dwelling unit in a new accessory structure as shown below. And you can read for yourself the areas that are lined through are taken out, and the areas that are underlined with italics are added.
Thank you. And I neglected to mention Article 37, although obvious since it passed unanimously. I need to state that a two-thirds vote requirement was met. Please add that to the minutes. Okay, we're now taking up for discussion Article 38 regarding.
Second.
And that's right, now that there's a second. Any questions or discussion regarding Article 38? All right, well then, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed? Article 38 passes unanimously and therefore satisfies the two-thirds vote requirement. And that satisfies our obligations as legislature for the budget and laws. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Moderator, I move, uh-oh, we've got a hand up. What do you want to do, Mr. Moderator?
You moved, you're moving to adjourn?
A second, then.
All right. It's not debatable. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for being part of the annual town meeting.